Our special call meeting of the Cookville City Council to order to a roll call, please.
Councilman Womack here. Councilman Miller here. Mayor Shelton here. Vice Mayor Wheaton here. Councilman Walker here. Five present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so, stand for the invocation given tonight by Mark Davis, Director of Missions for the Stone Association, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag.
Father, we thank you for being so good to us. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. God, we know that none of us are in a position of leadership without you putting us there. So I pray, God, for your wisdom on the city council members, for the business that needs to take place this evening. I pray, God, that you would give them ultimate wisdom and the decision-making that they need to do. And I pray, God, where there is agreement, that there's humility. I pray where there's disagreement, that there's understanding. I pray, God, that they represent the city well. God, give them your favor tonight and your blessing. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Consider approval of agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
A motion.
The second. Motion, second. Any discussion? All vote?
All votes correct. Yes, motion carries.
Their new business for a hold a public hearing, consider on first reading ordinance oh two one dash oh six dash thirteen, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty one, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty two, for Cookville Regional Medical Center. Paul Korth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you for allowing us to present this budget tonight. I want to make a special thanks to the board members that are in the audience tonight that have come to take time out to be with be with us tonight as we present this this budget. Budget that the medical center and the board is asking for is approving for funds needed to operate the medical center for FY twenty two. In order to do this budget, this is to continue to provide a comprehensive quality of medical care to our community that is needed. It's to continue to employ the over twenty four hundred employees at the medical center. It's to continue to expand and continue to grow our medical center. We plan on adding approximately a hundred new jobs. There'd be approximately ten new physicians added to this year's to this year's budget. So as we go through the operating budget and capital budget, let me first thank the council for being diligent in reviewing this with us. I know there were some mistakes in some of the spreadsheets that were done, and we made those corrections. So this budget tonight, the one that was presented at the last work session, is the corrected budget. There were some some errors that were found, and we have corrected those. So you'll see on the slides and in your presentation that the budget for the hospital is operating net revenue of almost three hundred forty five, almost three hundred forty six million dollars, the operating expenses of almost three hundred and twenty one million dollars, with the majority of that being in salary and wages, benefit cost, and supply cost. That makes up the majority of the operating budget going forward. The next slide is the capital budget. The capital budgets, we have many of our departments and physicians have weighed in on our departmental capital budgets, our expansion budgets and our innovation budgets. The departmental budgets this year is twelve point six eight nine million dollars, and those many of those items are listed on the next couple pages. Let me just highlight a couple of those large, large items that we're budgeting for is the expansion of our DaVinci robot, our surgical equipment. It's about one point nine million dollars. Our telephone system is outdated and needs to be repaired. That's almost one point nine million dollars. But we continue to have in our budgets as we go forward about a million dollars this year to replace out beds throughout the facility. There's no way that we could do this all in one year, having almost two hundred and seventy beds in the medical center. So we try to budget those out each and every year. So it's twenty four medical surgical beds and sixteen ICU beds, budgeted a little bit over a million dollars. We need to continue with the with the nurse call system. This will be phase two, finishing up our nurse call system and including our inpatient rehab hospital, which is across the street of about a million dollars. Those are the large items that are on the capital budget. Each of those items, though, have been detailed out and for for your review. And as we get towards the end, I'll be glad to answer any questions on those. The next couple pages are just are just that, the actual department budgets as we move forward. And then we move into the expansion budget and our innovation budget. As always, we try to put about a billion dollars in there if there's any land or anything that we missed in our budgeting opportunity to on the innovation side to do that. We've got some parking lots that we need to work on the next over the next fiscal year. We also need to finish the cath lab renovation that was started last year. That's kind of a continuation. That total project's about three point two million million dollars. We're asking for expenditures this year of three point one million dollars. And then one of our next biggest projects we need to encompass and take on at the medical center, it's probably going to be a three or four year project, is is Four West and Five West renovation. That's part of the nineteen seventies building, and it needs some some modifications and upgrades to that. Over a four year period, that project's probably going to be about sixteen point two million dollars. But we're only asking for four point nine million dollars this year as we as we will phase that in, and that will take some time to do that. The major part of that renovation is to continue to expand and give the hospital more more beds. Recently, we've had to go back and revert to some semi-private rooms to give a give us enough bed capacity to meet the challenges on a daily basis of the census that we have at the medical center. It's kind of the highlights of the budget. As I finish up here, be glad to answer any questions in a minute. But, you know, again, this budget is needed. This budget is needed to operate the medical center. If we don't get this budget approved, we won't be able to grow and expand. We'll have to cut or eliminate services. There'll be no new jobs. We may actually have to lay off some individuals to meet last year's budgets on this. I know there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of talks recently about some of the administration budget and what some of our salaries are. Let me just speak a minute about that tonight if I could. Since two thousand sixteen, our administrative budget salaries are down three hundred thousand dollars compared to what they were in two thousand sixteen. Over that time period, we had two vice presidents that retired. We did not replace those individuals. We had two vice president that took other positions, one of which was the chief operating officer, one of which was chief financial officer. Those two positions were not were not replaced. We thought that was critical to do that, to save the monies that we needed to operate the medical center. So again, our administrative budgets, from a salary standpoint, are down three hundred thousand dollars on an annual basis since three since two thousand sixteen. This year, budget does include a three percent increase for the administration department, just like all other departments in the hospital. The salaries for the C suite are determined using salary surveys from two large national data banks. We use a data national data bank called Thompson, I mean Towers and Watson and Sullivan Carter. Those those surveys are done nationally, and we have access to those, and our human resource department takes into consideration those. Both of those search surveys will show that the C suite salaries are somewhere between the twenty first and twenty seventh percentile of those nationally compared to hospitals our size. The comparison hospitals are between a hundred and fifty and four hundred million dollars in revenue, and as you just saw, our hospitals about three hundred and forty forty million dollars. Just to give you that kind of in perspective, my salary is about twenty five percent of that national ranking. So that would mean that seventy five percent of the CEOs in that one hundred and fifty to four hundred million dollar net operating hospital make more than what what I do. So I can assure you that our salaries, being at twenty one to twenty seven percentile, rank very favorable comparable to any other hospital in in the in the United States. With that, I know Alan Ray, our our board chair this year, would like to come up and say a few words, and then I'll be glad answering questions.
Either way.
Mayor, council, thank you for allowing us to be here and talk about the budget. I just wanted to say that the budget that's been presented to you has been approved by the board without dissent, and I would encourage you tonight to vote for this budget. I think it's well done. It's what the hospital needs, and it will help us to continue to provide quality care to our patients. Thank you.
Joe, did you want to? We'll have the public hearing in just a minute.
Okay.
If the council has any questions, and then we'll open the public. Do you have any questions for Paul before the public?
How many? You said you were talking about the C suite and administration. How many administrators are what is the I've heard it. I've heard of the C suite that specifically is that?
So it would be the chief chief executive officer, myself, chief financial officer, chief operating officer, chief legal officer, chief nursing officer. Those are the ones I referenced about being as part of the C suite. We also have several other people in our administrative budget. Well, also, I'm sorry, would also include the the chief strategy officer. We also have other individuals in the administrative department that I said that was about three hundred thousand dollars less than what prior year, you know, we got administrative assistants. We have about three administrative assistants in that budget. All in all, the operating budget for the administrative department for salary wages is about two point six million dollars at total.
Any other comments for questions for Paul? We'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Do we have anyone that would like to speak about this matter?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate being here today and giving me the opportunity to speak. My interest in this process and and this issue is both on a personal level and that of the wonderful service that Cookville Regional Medical Center provides to our region. Not too many years ago, I had some very high risk open heart surgery there that involved an aneurysm that could have ruptured any time and replacing the heart valve at the same time. And I will tell you briefly that in terms of the surgery, the care at the hospital, the rehab, I could not have better been taken any better care of anywhere in America. Last year, I found myself in there again. I had some E. coli poison that got released in my bloodstream, and my body went into septic shock, and I learned that fifty percent of the people that happened to don't walk away from it. And once again, my care was was excellent. It is my understanding, as Paul pointed out, that there's been some interest in what the salaries are for all the folks that work at the hospital, two thousand plus, I guess, and at least some level of interest in those numbers being reported to the council on a quarterly basis. In my in all due respect to every member of the council, I think that being done would be extreme example of government overreach. Now, if you have questions about the in lieu of payment, for example, which the city hospital makes to the city in lieu of taxes that hasn't been increased in a few years, I think that's a fair and reasonable question to ask, you know, to look at, to examine. It's a fair question. But if you're going to examine that question, I think the bigger picture would require also to look at the services and that were provided for people in this community and this region for which there was no charge that had to be written off, specifically as it relates to the time of the tornado and possibly even time during this pandemic situation that we've been under. And services in the hundreds, probably hundreds and hundreds of thousands, maybe more than that, that the hospital charged nothing for. So if we're going to talk about in lieu of payment, which is a reasonable question to ask, then let's let's I would encourage the council to think about that aspect of it also. And I found in my eleven years on the council that from time to time, I had to do a heart check, and I'm not talking about the blood pump now. I'm talking about the core of your being, your core values. And it might be a time I would encourage the council to to have a heart check and really ask yourself the question. In full transparency and honest general setting anyway, am I really interested in what salaries of all the people are, the nurses, the doctors, administrators, the custodians, the groundskeepers, the people that run the gift shop? Am I really interested in just what one person makes? Just what one person makes? We know about that process. I'm speaking specifically that I know questions and observations aren't supposed to be pointed at one individual, but but it was just specifically the hiring of Mayor Shelton, which was, you know, it looked at by the hospital administrator, it was looked at by the city attorney, it was looked at, I'm sure, by the HR people from both sides and and all they love. And even the council, who didn't fully maybe trust the judgment of all that during that period of time, decided to have and hire an outside attorney to look at that also. And this attorney came back with the same thing. Everything's good. Everything's fine. It's quick and clean. No, they're there. No, they're there. So as we look at that, I would encourage the council not to let whether you agree or disagree with that process or disagree with that hiring, let that factor or that thinking enter into your consideration of the hospital budget. Please don't allow this to be an opportunity to rattle the cage of the hospital and to make this process more difficult for them. It wouldn't be fair to the folks in this community. It wouldn't be fair to the hospital. It wouldn't be fair at all. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Just come up and identify yourself, please.
Council Mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Dr. Charles Huddleston. I am a practicing surgeon here in Cookville, Tennessee. Moved back to what I consider home in two thousand twelve. I grew up in Livingston, was an alumni of Tennessee Tech before going off for medical school and general surgery training. Since the the time of my arrival back here at the hospital, I've seen nothing but growth. I brought with me a new service line for bariatric surgery, and we have since expanded and continued to grow the the robotic surgery program here at the at the hospital. I, as a physician, have no vested interest in the hospital. I'm not paid by the hospital. The only working relationship that we have is that I am a staff member of the hospital. I'm currently sitting in the chair of the Department of Surgery, but I'm not the only one that's had to suffer through that. We do have a small working relationship. We are we are landlords for the our practice, my practice, our business owns the property that the Advanced Wound Care Center leases. But other than that, we get no financial payments from from the hospital. Having said that, I understand that everybody's sort of had questions, concerns about administrative suite and salaries. But obviously, comparing the budget to the overall expense that Paul had lined out, I think a lot more of that money is getting paid to the nurses and to the janitors and to the people that work harder than anybody else in that hospital. As a matter of fact, I think it would be prudent to perhaps give the public an outline of the average salary of a nurse, say, coming out of school with ten years' experience, with twenty years of experience, for the for the environmental services staff that work tirelessly to keep the hospital clean, you know, and and I would I would beg to I would guess that they probably are deserving of a raise. And I believe they just got one anyway, because they work harder than anybody in that hospital. The the budget, to me, as a physician, I simply use the services of the hospital to provide care for our patients and have thoroughly enjoyed my time there, continue to enjoy my time there, and and look forward to continue to help grow the hospital and its services. As a staff member, I myself, of course, and again, just speaking for myself, I don't I don't see any issues with the budget as such, as long as we're able to continue to provide care for our patients and for our community. And we have serviced, I specifically have been able to service patients from as far away as Memphis when they have had to travel to see me for bariatric surgery, and they all get their surgery done at the hospital. So, yeah, thank you all for your for your time consideration.
Anyone else?
My name is Linda Loftus, and I'm with independents again. So I am here representing probably the most vulnerable population because I work with people who come out of domestic violence and human trafficking and drug use and things of that nature. And one of the things that I am here to say is the Cookville Regional Hospital has always treated my girls and the men that I work with with the utmost respect, and that starts from the top down. And if there is, what, two percent of a different or twenty one percent of a difference, then I don't see why it has gotten to this level where we're having to waste your time and our time as community citizens to debate their salaries that are not coming from taxpayer dollars. If at any point this quarterly request were to hinder any administration's ability to do their job correctly in the way they've been doing it, then it could hurt every person who walks through that ER, every person who comes in to give birth to a child. It could hinder every patient. And it just seems silly that we're going to nitpick and do overreach or attempt to do overreach from the government over something that, my personal opinion, is none of the city council's business. And I don't know if I should have that opinion or not, because I have not been able to look at the detail of that. But based off what they're saying, if that is accurate and it's been agreed upon, then there is absolutely no reason that it should have ever gotten this far, because they provide a valuable service to our community that I often complain about. So I am not always pro Cookville Regional Service or Cookville Regional Medical Center, but I can say this for a fact. They have always done their best, and they have given quality care to every person. Don't like the way they handle their finances sometimes with our patients who are poor, but they always work with our girls, always. They always give them an opportunity to pay their bills reasonably and in timely manners, and they have never given me, and I'm hard to please, any reason to debate with the hospital outside of just the stuff that I would with anyone else as an advocate for our people who cannot afford to pay their bills. And so I just want to say, as from the poorest of the poor population, anything that hinders that and causes more stress to that population, I cannot get behind and I cannot support. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
There one.
I didn't intend to get up to speak when I came, but my name's Mary Clemens. Just had a question because of something that was said about not wanting to reduce services. I have MAs. I'm still a licensed registered nurse in good standing, worked with Dr. Womack for decades, went to school and worked with L. Moore. Recently, I've had trouble now with my right leg. This has been just, well, what I consider a fairly recent problem. And one night, I finally I could not put weight on it at all, at all, and was getting out of the car. My husband had actually had surgery out of town, and I could not get in. And I said, well, let's just go to the emergency room. At least I'll find out what the trouble is. And I got there, and I was informed now by emergency room personnel that they no longer do MRIs on, I guess not, but well, I'm not clear if they thought it was a true emergency, if they would or not, but on persons who weren't admitted, is what I was told. And I felt confident I did not have a fracture. I had not fell or had anything to cause one. And I was there about six hours, and the nurse practitioner was very nice. They discharged me, but said what he recommended, what I needed was the MRI, and they didn't do that there. And I know I used to work there. I mainly worked in ICU, but I floated and came in and worked extra a lot in the emergency room. At that time, we did whatever diagnostic needed to be done to find out what the problem was with a person if they came into the emergency room. And I was later told that they were not, I was told this by somebody else, that they are affiliated with the hospital, that they're not doing that because the anesthesia group that worked with the orthopedic surgeons is gone or is about to be gone. I think it's it's gone, and our suites are cut down. Also, before I left, this this is really an issue that just needs to be addressed with people involved, though, when I think it was supposed to be. But I could not stand at the sink to wash my hands. And I told them I needed help going to the bathroom and before I left. And and our Ann and another person that I'm not sure what he was, but helped me. And this was before any of the COVID restrictions were lifted. Of course, that's really doesn't matter, washing your hands after using the restroom, especially a public restroom is nursing, you know, within nursing one oh one hygiene. And they didn't offer to help me wash my hands, which it would have been hard standing at the sink. But I know when I was there, if that had been me, I would have told the person, let me get some washcloths and wet them and put soap on one, you know, and get you some paper towels or dry your hands with it. And I didn't ask for them to when they didn't seem to want to. I just wanted to leave. If y'all were short on washcloths, I'll buy some and donate it to you. But I was real disgusted about that after working there. I had my husband get me wet paper towels to wash them with. So I'm concerned, and I don't know why for sure. I kind of got two different stories, but that there's already evidently been a reduction in services. I don't know if that's sound where you like, you know, maybe you could flip that around and say, well, that's because not paying these people enough, you know, need to get it up. I don't know. But I'm just very concerned about that, that it's not that it could happen. It's already happened.
Anyone else? Any other comments? We'll close the public hearing portion, and we'll have we'll have discussion among the council. Any other public comments? We will close the public hearing portion.
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the presented possible project.
All right. We have a motion to approve the budget as presented. Is there a second?
I'd like to second that motion.
Motion, a second. Now, discussion among the council.
I'll kick us off. Question real quick for Paul. I know this is based on public comment. I mean, and maybe it's not the call. Maybe it's from Mr. Ray, the chairman. But the when the hospital board meets, do they get an opportunity for public comment at those meetings?
Yes, there are. There are. There are. The public, the public is open to come to to our meetings, just like just like here. And I would highly encourage this young lady to speak to our customer service. If she'll just call the administrative office, they will get her with customer service, and they will look into the the issues that she had and see what see what we can do to correct those issues.
Is it common, so at the budget hearings and everything, that's a public comment when the budget is considered at the hospital meetings?
You know, it's it's always available. We just never usually have anyone there that wants to come and speak. But I know that there's been board meetings before in the past when individuals have come. It's been very rare. You know, I've been here twenty two years, and it's probably a handful of times that a concerned individual would come to the board level. Most of the time, the concerns are usually handled when they're called, because we do have a customer service department that that takes care of most of those. And ninety nine point nine percent of them are probably handled before they escalate up to the board level.
Thank you. That's all I've got for Paul. I'll kind of continue my discussion. I just I needed to clear that up from my own knowledge. But it seems to me, you know, it's certain, you know, CRMC is a city-owned hospital. I believe I'm put here in the position to represent the people who vote us in to this position and are the stakeholders in the city of Cookville. And therefore, they are the same stakeholders that are in Cookville Regional Hospital. Oftentimes, the city council and the people's representatives become the avenue that those people seek to ensure that their facilities and what's available to them does does operate and and provide those concerns. Now, it's my belief that, you know, we take the action of bringing about a board of trustees in the hospital, and we we work through them to qualify our concerns, concerns of the public, things that that are brought to our attention. And then they work in turn with the administration, who who is responsible for the operations of the hospital. So, you know, I think that the city of Cookville has a real gem in CRMC. We've afforded a great deal of quality care. I, for one, I've I've spent many nights in that hospital, both as a patient and and in tears in the hallway with loved ones. So I understand what it means to So I, I understand what it means to be in those hallways and experience the, the love and care that comes from the, the staff, the doctors and the nurses that, that work there. And I think that's what is the root of, of what is CRMC and what, what this is. Now, I understand that in the past few days, we've had a lot of, a lot of wind that's blowing, but that's high up in the tree. And, 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 you know, what we have to concentrate on here is that the foundation of this hospital and is the care it provides is, is the main operation of it. And I think it's important that we do fund the hospital this year. With that being said, I think there are some concerns and I think there are some concern. There, there are clearly concerns from other council members and members of the public. And, you know, I, I know that there were some mistakes made in this budget and that, that kind of alerted some of us to look, take closer looks and, and, you know, just looking at our fiduciary duty to try to pass this budget and hear the public's comments on it. And to be aware is a really critical part of this process. So, you know, I, I have been given good explanation about any errors that may have been in the budget. I, I feel strongly that I, I trust our hospital board member trustees, that they were, they are aware of what's, of all the operations and, and things that are going on in the hospital. And, and I can support that. Going forward, I think there does need to be a discussion beyond this between the council, the board of trustees and administration about what, what role the administration plays and how they can report on, to the council, what, what their position in the hospital is, how, how that expense is, what, what we see for that facility to get managed. And I think that's an important thing, just as anyone would want to understand how administration manages any asset that they have or any, anyone is managing their assets. So I think that's a discussion that doesn't need to be hijacked by voting on it, on a budget. I think that is a discussion that takes place over a year and, and over several years beyond any, 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 in my role on the council beyond for years to come. And I think that, you know, that's, that's something that's going to continue and evolve. I think we're at a point now where if we can open that discussion up and, and work that over the next year, we can, we can kind of work through some of these things that are concerns and address them in an appropriate manner. So I, I am for moving forward with the budget as, as, as it is and making sure that our hospital is, is supported with its funding.
The other comments?
I've been involved with Cookville Regional when it was Cookville General back many years ago. My wife and I moved here in 1975 and there were 20 physicians on staff and about 250 or so employees. Now it's quite a bit bigger. We've had all sorts of growth. Gone from 20 doctors to over 200 doctors, but that there've been problems lately. We, former mayor Dwight Henry and city councilman Dwight Henry mentioned that he'd had open-heart surgery there. But our current surgeon, Louis Wilson, has been given a contract which is just impossible for him to take. He called me this afternoon and said that the contract that he had gotten from administration was impossible to take. And we're losing him as a result of that. And he is a world-class cardiac surgeon. He and his partner Todd Chapman are world-class. And for them not to be on the hospital staff after a few more days is just a travesty. And I go way back. I've seen how we've grown. I retired in 2013 after a 39-year career and, or 38-year-old career. And that was, I can't, I'm seeing the way the hospital is going now. We had a situation back in 95, 96 where the hospital was up for sale. And with the skin of our teeth, it did not sell. The city council at that time wanted to sell the hospital to Fort Sanders in Knoxville. And I was involved. I was chairman of, of the medical staff and was involved with that situation. What we've got right now is we've got stories of, a lot of people have called me about this. We've got stories of salaries that are quite high, quite high. Mr. Cor, I talked with Mr. Corff yesterday about that and talked about ways to get more information to the city council. So I'm willing to work with the administration. But the fact that we have these salaries and stories of salaries and then doctors are not being given contracts and are being forced out, I think it is, is a bad thing. So I, I think that we need to work with the board of trustees. We appoint a new trustee next week to the hospital. And I, I think that the situation is not as good as it's been portrayed, particularly since the, as, as I said earlier, that Dwight Henry's doctor is being forced out. And that's not right. That's not right. So I'd like to find out about the salaries of the people in the C-suite. And I'd like to make an amendment to the budget to try to, and I want to support the budget. I think it's a, it's a reasonable hospital budget, but I think we need to have the information available to all the people in Cookville. It's a public hospital. The salaries of the people who work for the city of Cookville are public knowledge. And I'm not asking for the doctor's salaries, but I am, I would like to make an amendment that we make the, the passage of this budget contingent on the fact that we get from the administration the salaries of the chief executive officer, the chief operating officer, the chief information officer, the chief strategy officer, the chief legal officer, the chief financial officer and the chief nursing officer. And I make that as a motion. As a, as a proposed amendment. It's that.
You can make, you can do that.
Yes.
I just.
Second. Okay. Now I just have to have a second.
I'll second that.
We have a motion.
Can we read that again? Got it. And there's a lot of, a lot of cheese right there.
It's about eight. It's the chief executive, chief operating, chief information, chief strategy, chief legal, chief financial and chief nursing.
How many is that total? Do we have a CIO, chief information officer?
Let me count. Three, four, five, six, seven. The top, that would be the top seven people in administration of the hospital. Is that right?
That, those are the individuals that are listed as in the C-suite as chief. Yes, whatever. Yes.
So there's motion and second discussion.
Yeah. On that, on a personal note here. So last March, my, my wife had a child and she had some issues and had to have a blood transfusion when that happened. So she was breastfeeding my newborn son at the hospital, getting a blood transfusion. And what, what happened was the billing at the hospital, they walked in and asked for a credit card. In the most vulnerable time of someone's life, we're asking for a credit card for a, a patient at the hospital. I feel that I need to know where that money is going at this point. There's, of course, it's going to lots of the medical staff, but whenever the head of the administration is sending billing people in. Multiple people have told, asked me about this in the emergency room, people getting head stitches. And the billing cards are coming in and asking for a credit card from people at that moment. Like, I think the public needs to know where that money is going. And that is why I support this amendment.
As a point of leap of concern here, th- this would be due before the next council meeting? Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, Mr. Dr. Womack did not give a deadline on his, in his amendment.
But it was contingent on passing the budget. So how was?
Yes, the, his, his motion is that his vote in favor of the budget is contingent upon the hospital disclosing to, I guess, whoever.
To the city council.
For the city council, these disinformation.
These seven.
Disinformation. Disinformation for the salaries of the seven people in the C-suite. And, and the administration deliver that to the city council as part of the passage of the budget.
Okay. As a, as a point of order, if, if this amendment were to pass, this, this meeting would be concluded and, and we would move to the next budget session. And as, and a second question in that, if it were to fail, we would have an opportunity to still pass the city of Cookville project.
Well, if this.
That's correct.
If this passes tonight, then this ordinance is not adopted on first reading.
Asking if the, if the amendment to the original motion fails, then we go back to the original motion. We would vote on the original motion.
Exactly.
Yes, correct.
But if the amendment passes, then this ordinance doesn't pass on first reading. And so the process would have to start again.
Start again.
If this, if, if you're, if the amendment passes.
Right. I'm just amending the, the budget.
Understand. But no, we're amending the motion.
I'm amending the motion for the budget.
Right. And if it's contingent and those contingencies aren't met, then this ordinance does pass.
So it's up to the administration.
So those contingencies are not met. So this would have to be re-presented again after those contingencies are met.
So we would have to verify that these contingencies were met with another meeting.
Oh, yeah. You'd need, the ordinance would have to, the ordinance would have to come back for first reading because the contingencies are not until the contingencies are met.
But it, but if they were met, we could go on the second reading.
No, you'd have to pass first reading with the contingencies completed. In other words, everything has to be complete to move forward. You can't, you can't piecemeal something, you know.
This is probably.
This is a material amendment and it has to, you cannot.
Material.
Yeah, material.
What is a material amendment?
Significant amendment. Significant. This is a significant amendment to, to passing the ordinance, to passing the budget of the hospital. This, this is a request for information, not for or against a specific budget. So anyway, if, if this amendment passes, then if the hospital agrees to present this information to the council, then it would come back for first reading again with that information in place. And then if it passed at that point in time, it would go to second reading. That way, everything is done with a complete ordinance going forward.
And we would still have an extra week after next week before the budget is due to the comptroller. Correct. Like, there, there, there would be another week following next week's meeting that we could still get the budget approved before.
The two readings have to be one week apart.
Right. Yes, sir.
Do we have to have another special meeting?
There has to be another special call meeting.
Yes, sir.
Based on your.
Even though this is the first reading of the budget, we would have to still have another first reading.
If this were not a material amendment, then, see, this is a special call meeting and we can only consider what's on the agenda. Okay? And this, in my view, is a material amendment to the ordinance. And it, and therefore, it would have to pass on first reading after this contingency is developed. If this were just a minor amendment of housekeeping or something like that, then you could make the amendment tonight and move forward. But this is a, this is a significant, I think this is a material amendment. I don't think this is an inconsequential housekeeping amendment.
In, in, in. So. I'm not a legal scholar. I'm just trying to understand it. The, so to understand that in depth, because, because that, that, you know, we are trying to, to, to get this accomplished tonight, I think. That's my goal. And so if, if, if we have, is it because it's a special call meeting that we can't amend an initial reading?
No, it's the fact we won't have the information. It has to do with, even if this was a regular agenda item, if there's a material amendment, then you have to start, have to read it, read it with the material amendment in twice. You know, Dr. Womack talked about Cookville General Hospital and all that's true. And this goes back to, was debated earlier this year. In 1999, the hospital became a private act hospital. As a private act hospital, the operation and management of the hospital was vested in the board of trustees. And the city council appoints the board of trustees and relies on them to operate and manage the hospital, hire the CEO, and then the CEO hires other people under the auspices of the board of trustees. And this amendment is getting into the management operation of the hospital by requesting internal information. Now, whether or not this is a public or not, this is a private act hospital. It's not a governmental entity like the city council or the board of education. It's a private act hospital and that's a little different entity. And I'm not going to speak to the legalities of that tonight. But, but I do think that the board of trustees are charged with the sole and exclusive operation, operational management of the hospital. And I think that was confirmed by Mr. Carver who looked at this. And so that's where, that's, that's where we are. So everybody, you know, if this, I agree with Mr. Henry that said, if you wanted to ask about the in-lug payments, that's something that directly affects the city. If you want to ask about the facilities, because the city owns the facilities, that's something that directly affects the, the city because we own those facilities. But when you talk about the management and the operation of the hospital, I think you're more into the board of trustees territory. So that, that's just kind of.
Wouldn't this be in relation to the, the passing of the budget? I mean, that's, that was clearly one of the, to me, the, what, what are the fiduciary cities of the city council then? If we can't understand the operations of the hospital, why, why are we voting on this budget?
We're voting on the budget because the private act requires you to vote on the budget and the city charter requires you to vote on the budget. But the question is, where is your authority in relation to the management and operation of the hospital? And that's where you choose the trustees and rely on them to make those management and operation decisions. And they do that, just like this city council hires Mr. Mills, the, the board of trustees, the hospital hires Mr. Corff, and then he makes the employment decisions. That's the chain of command under the legalities of the private act. The, the city council does not own and operate and manage the hospital. You know, I think I said this many months ago. If the city council today voted to fire somebody at the hospital, the city council does not have the authority to do that. It's like the county commission doesn't have the authority to fire somebody over, that works with the school system because that's just not where the operation is vested.
And, and I totally understand that aspect. I'm just wondering why, if we have a fiduciary request about salaries and our responsibility is to pass the budget, why are we not able to get that information?
Well, you could request that information. I could, and you know, and you, but the, you, your fiduciary duty is to appoint a trustee that you trust to manage the hospital correctly. And then if the hospital has revenue problems, then you can remove one or more of all the trustees and appoint new trustees that do management differently the way you'd like to have it done. But right now, the, the fiduciary duty you have is to make sure that. But right now, the, the fiduciary duty you have is to make sure that hospital operates within its budget. The hospital doesn't seek any revenue from the city, but rather gives revenue back to the city in the form of seven hundred thousand dollars in lieu of payments, and the hospital has to take care of the physical facilities that the city actually owns. But then, so, so that's where the obligations are. And as far as the management operation of the hospital, that's vested in the Board of Trustees that you appoint one a year for, and there are, I think, nine trustees.
We have had vested financial interest in the hospital because we've helped fund their TCRS for multiple years until just recently where we got the, the law changed to where we're not having to fund their TCRS.
Well, that was part of the transition, um, that was part of the transition from Cookville General Hospital to uh, Cookville Regional Medical Center Authority. And that was one of the pieces of that puzzle that really never got transitioned uh, in a way that some people thought it should have. And that's, it's good that Mr. Mil- Mr. Davidson and Mr. Mills have caught that and rectified that, and eventually that'll be, that'll be corrected. But that was part of the transition process uh, between Cookville General Hospital and Cookville Regional Medical Center Authority, where at that time, the, the employees at the hospital were city employees because it was Cookville General Hospital, and their retirement didn't get transitioned over when it became Cookville Regional Medical Center Authority. And that was internal accounting between the comptroller's office, and it wasn't until Mike Davidson, I don't think, looked into it. And Mr. Mills then was very aggressive and followed up with the state legislature. But the city council wants to change the private act and realign the duties and the obligations from, from, and make themselves more directly involved in the day-to-day management of the hospital, then the city council can certainly ask that the private act be amended. There's certainly nothing to stop you from doing that, but the private act specifically vests the management authority of the operation of the hospital and the Board of Trustees of the hospital.
Does, does it take a full council to do that, to, to change? It takes unanimous vote or five votes?
No, I don't think so, four. But you have to request the state representatives do it, then the state legislature would pass it. It's, the, the private act has been amended many times. Uh, when they bought the hospital in Salina, it was changed. When they wanted to add some facilities, it was changed. The, the private act has been amended many times, and the city council can ask the legislatures to change the private act, to shift some of this responsibility and this uh, what you're talking, these areas you're talking about. And then the legislature passes it, it comes back, and has to be ratified by the city council. Like I say, that's been done many times, and this has been tweaked many times, but the two thousand sixteen amendment reaffirmed that the operation and management of the hospital is vested in the Board of Trustees. You know, that's just what it is. So.
What needs to be remembered is what's at stake here, and that is my patient that I saw today in Gainsborough, who gets his care from Cookville Regional Medical Center. And he can't go to Lebanon, he can't go to Nashville, he can't go to Knoxville, and he doesn't have to because he gets to come to Cookville Regional Medical Center. And he gets treatment for some pretty significant medical issues. And if we don't pass this budget, my patients, as well as many other members of this community, are not going to be able to receive the care that they need from this hospital. Now, I also agree that we need to sit down as a council, as a hospital board, as administration, and have some meaningful discussion about what we want for the hospital, the future of it, and, and what we want to have a role in when we make these decisions. It's my job as a council member to make sure that any entity that the city council has a decision-making role in, that we do our due diligence, and we educate ourselves, and we ask the tough questions. And at the end of the day, we're transparent. And I know that that transparency has been an issue for a lot of the citizens of Cookville, and I know that because they called me, they've called all of us, and they have asked questions, and I don't have answers to those questions. And so it's my job to find those answers. And then it's also my job to be transparent with what we're doing. And I do think that decisions were made in a way that took away some of that confidence of the citizens who elected us to this position. But again, at the end of the day, this is about a budget that needs to be passed for a hospital that provides care for our community. I want us to have discussions. I know we're already planning retreats for the hospital board, for the administration, for the council, to sit down and have these discussions. But with that being said, those are discussions that can be had, and there's going to be differences in opinions, and there's probably going to be some heated debates. But we've got to pass this budget first, then we can have the discussion later.
So we, oh, sorry. That was, we have a, we have an amendment, we have a, a motion of second on the amendment. And then, so we need to vote on the amended motion to see if the amendment's going to stick. And then we, if it doesn't, then we go back to the original budget motion, so.
Well, we're still in discussion.
But yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm just clarifying where we're at. We're about, we're talking about the amend- amendment to the motion only, not about the, the final, because there would also be a, a discussion in the final.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, y- you cleared that. I, I don't have anything else to say.
Okay.
No, um, so. Okay.
Any other? Okay, so we're voting on, do you want to add the amendment to the original motion to this?
Well, the vote is on the amendment.
Only, only if you're adding the amendment to ask, to, to request the, the seven salaries to the original motion, to, to make it dependent upon that about the budget.
I, I think that's got like one more concern here. So you have, you have two council members who have motioned to, to make this amendment, and, and it's a difficult position to be in to uh, think that if that amendment doesn't pass, that we could see the hospital budget fail.
Well, no, because we'll go back to the original budget.
But, but still, I think that, that there, there, you have to evaluate that there is an opportunity to pass the hospital budget right now. And, and to get that budget passed, um, if that requires concessions on either side, and that's, the understanding needs to come from, you know, w- would, would the other council members support passing of the original budget? If, if this were to fail, if, if they wouldn't, then we, we miss an opportunity to pass the hospital budget. And, and that's, that's a consideration for the other council members. I just wanted to bring that up to make, and, and I, I don't want to see, if, if that is on the table, I think it should be discussed at this time. And, and not, not held until, you know, a motion like this were not to pass and, and left us without an opportunity to pass this budget. I mean, you can't, you can't discuss theories. There's a motion of second of how this is going to proceed. You either, you either agree that that's how it's going to proceed, or you don't. If it doesn't, if it proceeds, then we have a discussion about this again. If it doesn't proceed, we're back to the original motion, which is to approve the hospital budget as presented, and then that's a discussion to have amongst, after that happens. Well, I mean, I think, I think when you have five members voting and two motion for a, a motion on, on an amendment, then there's, there's support that, that's the original motion to vote. When you only have two members, when you have two members motion and two other members that can vote something down, the balance is uneven. And I think that that is what, what I'm, I'm, I'm pointing out is that in essence, there is an opportunity to pass this budget. There is another, there's two members that have expressed a motion to pass this, to amend this budget and pass it. And if that were to fail, you know, there, there's not a balance to understand that there could still be support for the original amendment.
Unless they just, unless one of them decides that in the best interest of the community, whether it be in about seven salaries, it's about tens of thousands of people in the community, then they may decide to vote that way.
Are, are you, are you making that, I, I mean, are you making that argument as the mayor or the CSO?
As the mayor.
Okay.
Absolutely. I'm speaking tonight as the mayor.
Okay. I, I think that that is the concern that any council member sitting here has, is that right now, there's an opportunity to pass the hospital budget. And if that takes another week for this council to make, it takes another week for this council to make. But with two members of this council having, having asked for amendment to that budget for it to pass, if this were to fail, it could, in essence, fail the opportunity. And I just ask that the other, and this is all I'm asking, is that the other council members, you know, make that clear, you know, or, or consider that, that, you know, the effort to make this pa- like, make this budget pass, we have to move forward, and we need to have these conversations in the future. You know, I, I, I don't want to see that not passing this amendment failed our opportunity to pass a hospital budget tonight over administrative salaries. And, and that's what we're discussing right now. And, and I think that's the reality. And so, um.
Just to be clear, as you were saying, as Doc, as Mr. Raider said, this is what, if this, if this goes through, and then we vote on that and it goes through, that's merely going down the road again. The, the budget, correct me if I'm wrong, would then, this, this would have to then go back to the Board of Trustees for a decision.
That is correct. We don't, we don't know for sure what the Board of Direct, the Board of, the Hospital Board is going to do, whether or not they're going to comply with that request. They might go ahead and say, we'll operate on last year's budget. So make those cuts. We'll make those eliminations. I don't know.
One other option is if this amendment were to fail and you pass the budget on first reading tonight, it still has to come back for second reading. And perhaps somebody can work something out between the two, so that when it comes back for the second reading, somebody's somebody's satisfied with the promise in the future or information that's given, and then it comes back for the second reading and it can pass. But if it, if the amendment passes tonight, then you're, then you're starting over with or, with the first reading of the ordinance. Because I do think this is a material amendment to the ordinance.
Thank you, Dan. I think that's good advice.
That's all I was saying.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? So we're voting to add the amendment to the original motion. So, although.
That's correct. Those in the vote. Two yes, two no, one abstain, motion fails.
Okay, so we're back to the original motion and second, which is approving the CRMC budget as presented tonight. Now discussion.
Yeah, I, I guess I'll go on and go. Um, I, I really do, even though this failed, I, I, I do want to pass the budget, but I have multiple concerns. Um, I think there is, there are issues at the top leadership at Cookville Regional. Since we've been on the council, um, we've had to terminate service for people in Clay County. We had to shut down the, um, Clay County Hospital. Um, we've had a four point two million dollar lawsuit, kickback lawsuit that our, um, Cookville Regional had to pay to the Department of Justice. Currently, we're possibly going to lose, um, a really good, um, cardio surgeon, two of them, because of failed, um, attempts to create a, a nice contract, uh, to, to keep those cardiac surgeons here. So we're cutting services to our community. The thing that really, really bothers me is at the beginning of a global pandemic, right at the beginning, um, where pulmonologists are in, um, need throughout the United States, we, we fire a pulmonologist here in, in Cookville. I don't understand why we would, um, fire a pulmonologist at the beginning of a pandemic. I think that that's, um, a, an issue that we really do need to address. I, I think we need to work on our billing issues, um, going in, and i- if we're going to treat it like a business, then I think the shareholders of, um, the city of Cookville need to, um, understand how much, uh, money the, the C-suite's making. That's like, if you had any SEC filing for any public company, you could see how much the, uh, the board members make, the CEOs make, if you look at any SEC filing. Those are just some of my concerns. I, I hope that, um, you guys can work through some of those things because um, I, I don't like treating citizens of Cookville like they're, um, just bags of money walking in and asking for credit cards in their most vulnerable moment. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, I, I, I do think we have good quality care at the hospital for the most part. And, and, you know, when you're thinking about things and we're talking at the administrative level, I, I would encourage, uh, over the next year before the next budget, that, that we find a way for the administration to, to spell out to the council and to the Board, for the Board of Trustees in a way that, that we can report on what our management costs are of the hospital. And it, I don't think it necessarily has to be specific to salary, but if we can get a clear picture of what the administrative costs are to run the hospital, I think that would certainly help, um, the information to the council. And I, I hope to see that in the coming year. I think that's something you work towards, not something you demand and, and hold a budget on. And so I, 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 I appreciate that, and I, I can appreciate the need, the great need for the city to, to pass its hospital's budget and get back to working on the hospital.
Yeah, I, I don't think that this is, this is the way to go about making a decision like this. It is one of the largest assets that the city has, and it's as any, I would say, I mean, they're literally saving lives there. I have worked at University of Mississippi Medical Center, I have worked at Vanderbilt. Those hospitals have problems too. Every hospital has problems. If you don't think they do, then go work in a hospital. And there, yes, there's issues we need to address. But if we don't vote on the budget and we don't pass it, we're, we're stalling ourselves in having that conversation. These are conversations that, again, can be had in a civilized adult manner without essentially holding the budget hostage. And I don't want to use that word in that phrase, but we're down to the wire now, and I feel like, again, while, yes, there are issues that we need to discuss with the hospital, and I know we can work together and move forward with having those discussions, and that we can gain the trust back of the community. We've got to pass the budget first.
I want to say a few things, and, and this is as mayor Eric. Obviously, we all understand the importance of CRMC. It's one of the most important assets we have in Cookville and the entire region. Definitely attracts industries. Your area is a determining factor in new companies and jobs located here. They've told us that. The dividend back to the community each year, thirty-two million dollars through, uh, charity care and bad debt, that's very, very important. Governments in some communities actually have to pay the hospital to care for those that are unable to pay. Since twenty-ten, there have been sixteen hospitals closing in the state. Thirteen of those are in rural areas. And this past year, the tornado and pandemic showed just how important and critical CRMC is to our region. With the dire state of rural hospitals and the health and well-being of our citizens, please put people first and vote for this budget. This budget impacts lives. It has names and faces of our citizen patients and employees. This is serious. People's lives and livelihoods are at stake. To vote against this hospital budget is to say, we don't need the hospital. We don't care about the lives of our citizens. We're willing to let people be denied the treatment and procedures that they need, and to let people suffer. We're willing to let our competition win. We're willing to let good doctors go because we can't provide the tools and innovation they need to excel. If you kill the budget, you also kill recruiting of new needed physicians. In the words of Dr. Lee Moore, to know that council, board, and administration have the willingness to invest and acquire the equipment that is needed to be able to attract the best surgeons here. You'll kill morale after a year of tremendous strife for employees, the tornado and the pandemic, and now this. Kill jobs both existing and new, and kill growth. If you can't grow, you die. So if you kill community loyalty and trust, if you haven't noticed, we have competition. And that will continue to grow, and if CRMC can't grow, they can't compete. And if they can't compete, they can't, they lose. They end up losing, and if they lose, the community loses. One wrong turn by this council, and the consequences may be catastrophic. But what it doesn't kill is competition. Our perceived competition loves the chaos and the distraction. Our perceived competition loves the chaos and the distraction. Really, what don't you like in this budget other than not knowing all the salaries? Departments submitted their budget needs, they were reviewed, we as a council reviewed them. In all the discussions and back and forth about this budget, salaries, canines, in lieu of tax payments, not one time has the council mentioned anything related to the actual mission and vision of this medical center. Mission being building healthier communities and the vision being exceptional care to every patient every day. And that's exactly what this budget funds and supposed to fund. OB needs baby warmers and new fetal monitors, incubators and new lighting and beds for operating rooms so they can see better while doing the C-section. Surgery center needs to pay its employees, purchase updated equipment, perform critical life-saving procedures. Radiology needs software to keep the breast center of excellence so they can help people with breast cancer diagnosis and treatment. More robotic equipment is needed for surgeries which facilitate quicker recoveries and better outcomes for patients and recruiting the best physicians. Now cath lab renovations that have already begun, so this is vital for heart surgeons to operate. The last thing I'll say is all of us as elected officials, we have a higher calling and a higher responsibility to the community and citizens. That matters more than whether you like someone, where they work, or the job they have. It's mattered when we were devastated by a tornado. It's mattered when companies look and then choose to invest here. And it matters today relative to the medical care of our citizens. I've served this city for 15 years and four times I stood right there and taken an oath of office. In August of 2018, all of you stood there with me and we swore an oath and said, quote, "I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Tennessee, and the Charter of the City of Cookville, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of councilman to which I have been elected." That city charter that I, along with each of you, raised your right hand and swore to uphold, says in section 1.05. V. that, quote, "We shall promote and protect the safety, health, peace, security, good order, comfort, convenience, morals, morals, and general welfare of the city and its inhabitants. Therefore, to uphold that oath and to protect the safety, health, and general welfare of the city and our citizens, I implore you to cast your vote for this budget." As I said when I was hired at Cookville Regional, I'm going to uphold my word and not vote tonight. Please uphold the oath you swore to because there's way more at stake here. The health care of our region and the lives of its citizens. Any other comments?
Well, yes. Mr. Korth.
Yes, sir.
I talked with you yesterday and you said you hadn't read the editorial in the Herald Citizen. And I asked you to read it. Have you read?
Yes, I did.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know. I thought the editorial hit everything, hit the nail on the head about everything. So I still stand by that.
Right. Dr. Womack, you know me a long time. Whatever I tell you I'm going to do, I usually do. Or I always do. I've never lied to you, never told you anything different. We've always had a very good working relationship. And yes, I told you I would read that. And yes, I did.
I've got one more thing. So what are our plans with cardiac surgeons? Do you have someone in mind since we're not going to renew their contract?
Thank you for asking. You know, one, one of the individuals, Dr. Chapman, elected to retire. They both had a 15-year non-compete. I couldn't really terminate that contract for any reason unless I shut down the service. If that service was shut down. So they had a, a no clause in any way, shape, or form to be able to terminate their employment with the center for 15 years. One of those individuals, Dr. Chapman, decided to retire, the second which Dr. Wilson was offered a contract. He was offered a contract very identical to Dr. Tim Powell, who is still one of our cardiac surgeons. We have, we have three today and we will still have one. Dr. Tim Powell will still be here. And our efforts on recruiting have started. We will, we will provide locums coverage, which is temporary coverage for that service when, when Dr. Powell can't be here in the times that he needs to be off, we will have coverage here for, for that. So we are recruiting, we are looking. We have some candidates that are in the pipeline right now that we come and do inside visits. But Dr. Wilson elected not to sign that contract because it was a very similar contract to all the other physicians. It, my only estimation, the reason why he didn't is because it had a clause in there that a physician could be terminated or for whatever cause within 120 days. And that wasn't what was in one of his original contracts. But those original contracts that he had do not exist anymore. There is no hospital in America that would hire a doctor for 10 or 15 years with a no-out clause. That's something my board has been working with me on over the terms that we continue to clean up some of those contracts and get some of those contracts in a more favorable meaning for us. And I don't know why he didn't, didn't take the contract. The contract was, again, very similar to what Dr. Powell has. And a matter of fact, it was actually a financial raise for him or a financial benefit for him more than what he was getting under the old contract. And I'll just leave it at that.
And are you working on anything with the anesthesiologists? I've heard horror stories over there where people can't get surgeries completed because of anesthesiology.
Every day. One of our board members, our chief of staff, Dr. Johnson's here tonight. He's actually an anesthesiologist. So, so they've been working very diligently on getting additional help. And we have signed, I believe, about a half a dozen more CRNAs and anesthesiologists to, to come join the medical center in the next few months. So we do have people coming in, yes.
To speak to Dr. Louis Wilson, he told me when he called me this afternoon that the main reason the contract said that there was 120-day out for the hospital terminating him, and that was his, I, I think it's a tragedy to have such a competent person and well-trained person here and you can't negotiate over between 15 years and 120 days. That to me is a tragedy because.
Well, he never came to me and offered anything else.
Well, I think I'd go back to him and because it costs a lot to get a cardio, cardiovascular surgeon.
And, and that's one reason, if, if we do pass this budget and we don't know that you're actually performing your job and keeping doctors here, you're firing pulmonologists at the beginning of a pandemic. Like, why are we doing that? That doesn't make.
No, I'm not going to give you the reasons why that, that physician was terminated. But if you said, I say, you would have done the same thing.
Based on the comments kind of given here, I think, I think that, you know, I, I kind of implore this council and Ricky to what you said, you know, we talk about duty and that was a large part of your comments there. I think that that is appropriate for this council to question the finances of the hospital, to look at them, to pass the budget. I know that's, that is our duty to pass that budget right now. I don't think we're in derelict of the duty by asking and negotiating and talking with the board of trustees and working with them and working with the administration to achieve the budget that this council thinks is appropriate. You know, I, I think that, again, what the core of everything is, is our employees at the hospital and, and our care providers and the care that we provide. And that it's not out of duty of this council, it's not out of duty of, of, you know, a moral cause, but it, it's out of the need for this community's hospital to run and the need for this community to be able to provide care to the stakeholders of that hospital. We, we really, we've got it, we're talking negatively, but we've got a great thing. We've got a community-owned hospital that serves an entire region. And, and that's, that's a rare thing to have. I, I think that moving forward and passing this budget is to preserve that. And it's to preserve the, the ability for the city to continue to own its hospital and, and negotiate the things that, that are within its duty. And I think that that's where I stand. I hope, I hope that I can encourage my other council members to, to push forward with that and, and, and vote, vote to pass this budget tonight so we can put at ease any concern. I think that a lot of this concern, you know, I referred to an oak tree earlier. A lot of this concern's at the top, you know, and, and we shouldn't let that affect the root of the tree and we shouldn't let that affect what, what we, what we've built for so long. And I encourage the board of trustees to take note of what, what's kind of been discussed tonight and work with council in the future and, and, and open up a dialogue that, that serves this community. That's all I've got to say.
And with that, I, I'm worried because we only have one or two votes on the entire hospital. We get a hospital trustee every year and we get to vote on the budget. So if there is an issue, lots of things, like we, we have to work it out before the budget. And I feel like I've been stonewalled the entire time that when I ask questions, ask about multiple things, I feel like there's a stonewall there and we're not, we're getting legalese answers, we're not getting actual answers to questions. So that's just one of my concerns for the future and hopefully we can work on that.
Any other comments or questions? All the.
Those in the vote. Three yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Thanks, everyone in the audience for being here. And we are adjourned.
Thank you, Council.